That is some public forum councillors and we will move on to apologies. And we only have the one, I'll move that the council accept the apology of councillor Andrew Wiley, second to councillor Staines, who is here and no longer an apology on my list. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. I'll further move that council confirms the public part of the agenda with the alteration as on the order paper with regard to standing order 2.1 option C being adopted. Second to councillor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item five, declarations of interest. I'll move that the council notes the elected members' interest register attached and confirms the proposed management plan for elected members and that council notes the executive leadership team's interest register and confirms the proposed management plan for that. Second to councillor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item six, I'll move that council confirms the public part of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 20th of March 2018 as a correct record. Second to councillor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Further move that council confirms the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 13th of April 2018 as a correct record and I'm not sure that... No, so, I've seen councillor Hall, second to councillor Hall, any discussion? Put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. On to the minutes of committees. Economic Development Committee, councillor Gary.
Your worship, I ask that council notes part A, items of the minutes of the Economic Development Committee meeting held on the 13th of March 2018, and B, approves the following part B item of the minutes of the Economic Development Committee meeting held on the 13th of March 2018, item seven, Dunedin Destination Plan.
Is there a second for that? Second to councillor Wilson, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Thanks.
Against, carried. Item eight, Finance and Council Controlled Organizations Committee, councillor Lord. I'd just ask that the council notes the minutes of the Finance and Council Controlled Organisation Committee held on the 13th of March 2018. Second to councillor Hall, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Community and Culture, councillor Hawkins.
Dear Nakwa, your worship, I'll move that the council note the minutes of the Community and Culture Committee meeting held on 17 April 2018.
Second to councillor Alfeso, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. On to the minutes of the community boards. Councillor Wilson, you're moving 10 to 15, sorry, understand your...
Yes.
Okay, is there a second for that? Second to councillor O'Malley, any discussion on any of those? There being none, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. On to the reports. Item 16, the Part Orfiero Stream Subdivision. Got some staff coming up to speak to that. Welcome, Marie, welcome, Carolyn. Do you wish to speak to this before we go to questions? You're happy to take it as read, so councillors, are there any questions on this?
If you'd move.
You've got a question, councillor O'Malley?
Have we covered, the Orfiero stream carries quite a lot of water during flood events, have we covered the engineering around this? Are we happy with that?
Yes, we have.
That's cool, had to ask that question.
No further questions, it's been moved, second to councillor Wilson, so moved councillor Vandevos, second to councillor Wilson. Do you, councillor Vandevos, wish to speak to this before you read it out?
Oh, thank you.
No problem. You're happy to have it as read. Okay, is there any other discussion? There being none, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. And that is as, although we're not going to read it all, that is as on the order paper. Thank you. Right, on to item 17, Dunedin Provisional Local Alcohol Policy. Change of the guard up here first. Now, do you want to preface this, Simon? So, we'll go straight into this as the report has been read, any questions? Councillor Elder and councillor.
Thank you. I don't know whether this is within the scope of the LAB, but on off licence like supermarkets etcetera, alcohol is displayed within the context of the whole supermarket and is therefore become normalised as part of a shopping process. And I was wondering if there was anything in the LAB that allowed us to say, well actually we would prefer if the alcohol department was kind of shut off and you had to go deliberately to get it. Is there any ability to do that?
The, no, there isn't. Under the changes to the Santon Supply of Alcohol Act, it's now required that all alcohol is in one particular area. But in answer to your question, no, that's all that it requires us, we're able to do in the LAP. I think in section, in paragraph five, it talks about the things that we can have covered in the LAP, but that's all.
Councillor Vandevos, oh, sorry, did you wish to answer that?
Well, just a question, is it not the case that such matters can be considered as part of each licence renewal? Thank you.
Vandevos.
Looking at the history of the provisional local alcohol policy and recognising that a lot of time and effort went into it, do we have any estimate of what it actually cost to produce the provisional local alcohol policy?
Sorry, we don't have that information to hand.
Okay. It sort of feeds into the next question and that is that, given that most of the useful elements for preventing alcohol harm fall outside the scope of the act, was it able to be foreseen that in fact there wasn't really much we could do anyway?
We believe that the LAP does provide some very, very useful tools, that the DLC can have regard to. But there is obviously some things outside the scope of what the LAP can do that would be useful, but under the current legislation, that's just not possible. But it does deliver a huge amount in terms of those one-way doors particularly, which the agencies are really keen to get in place.
And do you think that at least some of the work that went into producing the provisional policy will be of use for the district licensing authority in future? Sorry, the DLC?
Yes, most definitely, yeah.
Can I also answer that and point out that some of the issues within the scope of an LAP were proposed but turned down by ALA in Wellington. So, when we, because your question is about, well, was it worth going into the process in the first place? And there was certainly grounds to believe that we could influence, for instance, and dictate even, off licence hours, which is what we tried to do. But the licensing authority in Wellington turned that down. So, that's an interpretation thing, so I think that it'd be fair to say that we had realistic expectations in the first place, but we...
But there is some value that we still can get from the work that was done going forward?
In addition to that, but I was addressing the other side of your question.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Benson-Pope.
I'm going to move the recommendations, Mr Chairman.
Oh, so it's moved councillor, and is there a second please? Councillor Elder?
I'm moving the recommendations on page 41, that we rescind the early decision and that we approve the amended LAP which is attached for resubmission etcetera, and we agree to work with the relevant agencies to monitor the effectiveness thereof.
Okay, it's moved councillor Benson-Pope, second to councillor Elder. Do you wish to speak to it in the first instance, councillor?
Well, Mr Chairman, you should stand up, aren't we? I think we're all only too familiar, although I must say, I was one of the fortunate people who didn't take part in those exhaustive hearings that led to what I thought was a good, a good document. You've mentioned the issue we had with the Alcohol Licensing Regulatory Authority and indeed the issue there in respect of a lack of funding has led to an incredible backlog in terms of processing time, which is disappointing and something you would hope government would address. I think nonetheless, much in all, this has been a fraught process, this is an acceptable outcome and notwithstanding our best desires around some of the outlets and issues as raised around off licence displays, those can be regulated at renewal time and are. And there has been a significant shift in attitude around some of the suppliers, including the big players, around the key times in respect of glass, for example. So, it's a moving feast, but it's getting slightly healthier, I think, and I think this is a good interim position.
The speakers. There being none, I assume I can take that as your right of reply as well. And I will put it, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Thank you. Some of you may be staying for this one or not. The next item is the proposed litter compliance policy. Now, if you wished, first or just want to go straight into, straight into questions? Questions councillors? Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Just after a little more detail around the business case process for enforcement and what that might look like, and it's being delegated to the chief executive, so I'm assuming that means that the intention is that it will be managed within existing budgets rather than something that requires additional resourcing?
That's where the business case needs to come in, whether there'd actually be a requirement for external resource or whether it will be a contracted service that we combine with some other seasonal sort of enforcement activities or exactly what approach we use for enforcement.
And given that we're currently in the middle of a budget setting process, I'm just interested as to when, where this fits in in that timeline, if it is something that would potentially impact on our budgets for next year and beyond?
I can't give you a definitive answer on that, we sort of, we need to actually do the business case around how much we actually think, whether we, this is likely to be partially self-funded activity and what the actual requirement might be, hopefully fitting within existing budgets, but as, until we actually start working through that case, it's very hard to tell exactly whether enforcement is going to be better with in-house resource, existing resources, or whether we actually just use external.
Just finally, until that work is done, there will be no enforcement or will there be something in the interim until we get to there and what does that interim measure look like?
I've actually got a meeting booked later this week to actually work with our parking enforcement team etcetera, and actually, I'm also working with parks, looking to do some form of, whether we can actually combine and do some enforcement that way, using existing resources as of when the policy comes live on first.
Right, just an idea, given the overlap in the work that they do, is that a conversation that's worth looping, say Delta as a contractor, like our contractors into, or Taskforce Green into, just thinking of, you know, people tipping rubbish down the banks that are usually maintained by someone who had been potentially able to give us any leads that they found?
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, a very good idea actually, yes, well, I'll bring that up with our discussion tomorrow, absolutely.
Councillor Elder.
Thank you for all the time on this. I was just wondering, has there been any research done into the causative factors of some of the littering?
There has, has been done more in line with research around container deposit. So, a lot of the littering comes in on ocean currents, so the littering on the beach, there's a lot of beach cleanups that is actually carried, you know, to the beach. There's the Packaging Forum who have done their own littering research as well as Keep Dunedin Beautiful, so they're looking at behaviours, looking where litter bins are placed, all of these other factors as well. Illegal dumping tends to be in areas and tends to be quite a deliberate act, yeah. And we do see peaks around times where landfill charges go up, we see a peak at that time then it ebs away again, yeah.
So, sometimes maybe costs may be a factor, do you think, in illegal dumping?
Yeah, it is a perceived cost, so New Zealand does have very low landfill fees in comparison with other countries, but it is a perceived cost and any increase, you know, does spur on, you know, spate of illegal dumping, yeah.
Kind of what I'm leading on to is the carrot and stick stuff, and I was just wondering in some communities, say for example, in the suburbs and maybe in lower socio-economic areas or in any area for that factor, sometimes you can set up a, say a dump day or a day once a month or once a term for people to legally put their rubbish into a depository?
So, we do have rural clean-up days in some of our more satellite communities, so we provide those events three times a year now. We also find that littering is largely packaging products, so things like drink bottles and recyclable materials, so extending the network of public places recycling, supporting things like container deposit, supporting opportunities to divert that material is, would be a priority to us, yeah.
So, that's the carrot part. Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Wilson. Are you having to move any further questions? Okay, it's been moved, second to councillor Alfeso.
I've got a question.
Oh, you've got a question, sorry.
Just going back to the committee meeting where we had the discussion about the definitions of litter and where that came from and in answer to my question, you said that the definitions have been uplifted. Can you, can you just say where the, well, it came from somewhere else? Can you just say where the actual schedule and the fees came from? Did they come from Dunedin City Council or somewhere else?
So, I reviewed a number of other council litter infringement policies. So, the Litter Act itself has some restraints around the fee structure. I looked at about 13, I think, other litter infringement policies and I gleaned from those what I thought were the best provisions. So, I thought it was very good to structure those fees where you were applying the higher penalty where, you know, you knew it was repeat offending or you knew it was dangerous waste and then giving the opportunity, you know, to apply the smaller fee to allow that person an opportunity to change their behaviour. But of course, we're also going to have that, the litter control officer will have the discretion to just give a warning and to provide education. So, there's plenty of breadth in that to, to have, you know, good judgement on how we manage that enforcement or education piece, yeah.
No further questions? So, it's been moved, councillor Wilson, is there a second please? Second to councillor Staines, councillor Wilson, do you wish to speak to this? Any other speakers? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Thank you, Catherine, thank you, Chris. Okay, item 19, submissions on the draft government policy statement on land transport. Well, I go to questions or? No, and Chief, you might be speaking to this, so you don't want to speak to... Questions councillors on, this is item 19, submission on the draft government policy statement, councillor Lord.
In that page 93 of the agenda, item 10, it says that DCC notes the GPS supports better management of parking to reduce subsidies for single occupant private vehicle travel. I'm just wondering if you could tell me what those subsidies are? What they mean?
This is a phrase picked up from the government policy statement where the government believes that single occup...
I just need to...
Sorry?
No, no, don't, just pull it closer to you because it's activating, but you need to be direct.
Okay, did you, where would you like me to start again? Okay, thank you. So, this is a phrase picked up from the draft government policy statement within the document itself. So, that's what the government believes, that there is some subsidisation of single occupancy vehicle travel through parking.
Can you give me some examples of what that looks like or means or, it still doesn't make sense to me, I'm not sure.
Well, bear in mind that it comes from the government document, so it may be that we can't give a comprehensive analysis of it since it's there.
Surely we don't, so this is our subsidy, our submission to them and it's supposed to reflect what we feel, so we're just quoting their document back to them, is that what you mean?
It's so... The, it's, I think it's important to read it in the context of what follows. So, what follows is talking about fringe, the fringe benefit tax system, so, and that system can penalise employers who want to incentivise travel, so I think the two are
Councillor Vandevos.
Is a bicycle a single occupant private vehicle?
I would presume it is, yes.
So, a bicycle is a single occupant private vehicle? Is a car with two people on it, two people in it, a single occupant private vehicle?
The phrase, we've used the phrase single occupancy private vehicle here because that's in our integrated transport strategy, DCC's integrated transport strategy.
I understand that it's there, but I also believe that some people will interpret it as meaning a car and you've just interpreted it as also meaning a bicycle. And if we don't have any clarity on it, then quite frankly, statements like number nine, number 10, number 15 and even number five, to me, are not sufficiently clear in their intent that we would want to be able to sign off on them. So, given that bicycle is also a single occupant private vehicle and that there is a great move to shift the focus away from single occupant private vehicles, including bicycles, this would then be completely at variance with statement number five and I think also would throw into question what is being talked about when they talk about reducing subsidies for single occupant private vehicle travel in 10. My understanding of the subsidies of travel is that motorists and cars pay for the roads used by cyclists through their petrol taxes and therefore subsidise cyclists. I don't believe cyclists pay for these roads through any question, through any subsidy. So, what is the subsidy referred to in number 10 and is it paid for by cyclists? Is it paid for by car owners? I think I need to clarify, I think that Nick has perhaps not got it quite right. A single occupancy vehicle cannot be a bicycle because you can't occupy a bicycle. So, I think to be clear, a single occupant vehicle refers to a car. That doesn't, doesn't take away from your question, but I think we need to get that clear.
I think, I think I also might help clarify by saying the intent of our integrated transport strategy is to shift travel from the singular occupancy vehicle to all other modes, including the bicycle, bus, car sharing and other methods.
Councillor O'Malley.
Stand up time. I was just going to follow councillor Vandevos and suggest perhaps maybe we just put motor in front of that and that would also include electric vehicles and when we get to the point that electric bikes are back, we might be confused again, but right now we should be okay, we're just putting motor there, cool.
Other questions? Councillor Newell.
Thank you, just regarding paragraph 26, regarding the control of buses, just wondering if we can be a little bit more direct here and say, you know, it hasn't worked in our city and we would like control back, seems like we dance around it a little bit.
Not back, because I don't think we've ever had it, have we?
The control.
This is, this is your submission, so you should use the words that you wish.
Well, if there's any inclination to change this, that will have to be part of a resolution to see if there's council support for that. So, hold that thought and if you want to do that, that's fine. Councillor Hawkins, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. A few questions that I believe may or may not have been forwarded through to you by the Chair of Infrastructure Services and Networks Committee in advance of this meeting and one of them relates to councillor Newell's political suggestion, but I was also curious about the wording, sorry, the wording of paragraph 26 where it says, which organisations can operate public transport services, rather than referring to, say, councils or authorities? And I'm just wondering whether there was a specific reason behind that language in being as broad as that would be, because that obviously encompasses private operation or whatever. And second to that, where it talks about the operation of public transport services, currently that is undertaken by contractors and so is the intent to talk about things like planning and governance in this paragraph, rather than the actual driving the bus and putting petrol in it and picking people up and those...
The intent of this paragraph, the way it was written, is that legislation at the moment specifically provides that only regional councils can facilitate public transport services. So, what this paragraph is trying to say is that that might be too narrow, there may be situations where regional councils are appropriate to run public transport services, but councils such as ourselves could also be appropriate. So, I was, we were trying to provide for flexibility.
Okay.
I've drafted a resolution, how does this sound?
I think councillor O'Malley wants to ask on a similar...
Well, it's to that, it's to actually point 26 because it was staff wrote that after I request them to put it in as deputy chair and also as my role on the Regional Transport Committee. It was, it was a nod, it was a first step towards opening up the debate and defining where we would want to go, but I didn't feel that I had the authority to be specific and actually saying, this is what we want to do, but rather to have our response to the GPS as it's developing to... as it's developing to say that we are seeing some points where there's rigidity in the system, and therefore acknowledging that there are some components that are central government-based that we would like to draw attention to, and this really just opens the debate with government, really is my feeling.
Thanks for that, thanks for that clarity.
That, that's helpful, and I certainly wasn't, and I've drafted an amendment too, which I'm happy to circulate, but my intention wasn't to give a directive on our behalf more, just to suggest that there may be circumstances where it's appropriate to be governed by a territorial authority, it just wasn't clear to me from that. And my second one is around the way that the GPS is structured with its key strategic priorities, and then its supporting priorities sitting under that, and that's illustrated in the draft document. Does staff see the structure of the GPS being compromised, were we to suggest that the environmental elements of this be elevated to being a key strategic priority rather than a supporting one? Or do you think that the way that it is structured in its draft form would be undermined by such a suggestion?
Way I read it was that the emphasis on the environmental outcomes is similar to the current GPS, or the previous draft proposed GPS. But I also read it that there may be, there could be more changes as a second-stage GPS review, so I was not overly concerned at the way it was prioritised in the draft government policy statement, but I know that others have also commented on is the environmental outcomes, should it be of second, it reads like it's second order, if, if I want to put it like that, but I don't think it necessarily is second order.
Okay, councillor Benson Pope, do you have a question?
Thank you, it really relates to a question, the point that councillor Hawkins raised earlier about paragraph twenty-six, and it seems to me, given the context of the discussion earlier and what's been raised, that this turns on what operate means. At the moment, the buses in this city are operated by contractors of various kinds, supervised or planned by the ORC, and I'm just wondering if the interpretation of operate includes the supervision and route decision-making and contracting, that's fine, but it might be that it would be helpful to be more specific if that's, if we want to really highlight the issue of not the operator itself, but the, the level of supervision of the whole system.
It's the planning and funding, I think, that we've raised, so planned, funded and operated might in fact just be quite a simple change to make to improve or to strengthen that paragraph.
Okay, well, we'll get, we'll get through questions, and I've got a feeling that, from councillor Newell and from himself, and potentially councillor O'Malley, that there's a bit of tweaking of the wording would be preferred, so let's get to that, but let's clear up the questions versus councillor Alder, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr Kau, and my question was, there's a growth in getting from place to place with cycle touring and cycling, and especially with the electric bikes coming on stream. Is this considered as part of the transport plan, the linkages and connections between places and cycling as a transport, part of the transport plan?
I think the indications in the draft government policy statement are that the place-making functions of a transport network would be strengthened, and therefore the types of activities that you're suggesting are, would be complementary to the draft government policy statement's objectives.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no further questions. I'm going to call for someone to move this, but before I do, perhaps we could just get an idea of what wording changes might be wished for, and I take, is there, is there any inclination to change any paragraph other than twenty-six? councillor Vandevos.
I find the wording throughout this document so awkward, so difficult, and so I believe contradictory that my only option really here is to hope that we do not send a submission at all. I don't believe that any of these paragraphs really adequately express a rational submission.
Can you hold, can you hold your- Because I think you're speaking to the motion, to any motion now, so-
I'll wait till-
Well, you're not making a suggestion as to what changes you'd like.
Well, I'd like to change the whole thing.
Right, well then, hold that thought. Are there, are there any other inclinations to change, anything other than twenty-six? Because then councillor Hawkins, oh.
Thank you, your worship. I'm just sending around this now, but I'd like to add a new paragraph twelve or something thereabouts that says, given the challenge we face in meeting our targets under the Paris Agreement and the DCC's own goal of being net zero carbon by 2050, council recommends the environment, sorry, the environment, capital E, warrants elevation to key strategic priority in the government policy statement.
Okay. So that's, that's the, that's the first suggested amendment, thank you. Now, with regard to paragraph twenty-six, had, did you, did you just say councillor Hawkins that you'd circulated-
I've drafted something kind of awkwardly, sorry, I can't cut and paste from a PDF, so there are ellipses there for my own sanity where the, where the, where the sentences haven't been changed.
Have you sent twenty-six to pen?
No, sorry, I'll forward that, no.
So what I'm going to suggest we do, insofar as there are two specific and quite different suggested amendments, is we'll treat them as amendments, so if I could have, I think process-wise, and Sandy, you might want to just guide me on this, but I think we need a mover and a second for the substantive motion, and then I'm happy to entertain the amendments, and they can be taken separately, and then we can, is that, Sandy, the- Okay, the, this is, the advice I've received is that just, this is just a process issue, we want to make this as smooth as possible. The advice I've received is that we take a decision on the amendment of paragraph twenty-six first, and then we will deal with the second one.
Your worship, just, sorry, for clarity, if you are looking for substantive move, I'm more than happy to be it, but the motion as suggested in, on page eighty-eight, was it authorises the chief executive officer to make minor edits to this mission, and I'm just wondering what a minor edit is, which I think section twenty-six would be minor, but I do think that the suggested new twelve wouldn't be, so for clarity-
That is a reasonable point. That the suggestion for item twenty-six, for paragraph twenty-six is a minor edit, and could be left to your discretion?
We had some wording.
So, no.
Could we still clarify twenty-six while we're here now, rather than just send it back out again? I think it's pretty minor, but it's just a matter around the words of-
So what, where did this come, where did this come from?
Error.
Error. So this is the suggested wording, and given that it is still going to be, if we follow the resolution on the paper, this is still going to be subject to editing by the chief executive. So this is indicative, and we can, we can vote on this. So which, paragraph twenty-six, which councils, which councils can take responsibility for public transport governance, including transportation services, blah, blah, blah. So can everyone read that?
That's, that's not what I intended when I asked after, like, what they wrote, so maybe we, I don't know, we haven't captured, all I wanted to say, sorry, I'm just sitting here.
Well, I'll tell you what, just, just, wait, councillor Hawkins, you're putting this as a, as a amendment, so I'll give you the opportunity to speak to it now, and then councillor O'Malley can speak to it. Sorry? Right, is there a second? councillor Wilson, right.
Yeah, thank you. I, I support the, the intention of, of it as drafted, I just felt like it could use a little clarity in being more specific around governance rather than referring to operations, I just don't want it to be ambiguous, because it's quite clear that that's the intention of the draft submission, and that certainly feels like the mood of council to support that. The additional wording is really just to add context, I suppose, in that what I wouldn't want it to read like is a submission to the GPS that suggests that for some reason territorial authorities are inherently better or better placed across the board to make planning and governance arrangements for public transport. It's clear in areas like, well, Auckland's different because they don't get to control this at all now, but, or in Wellington, where the network crosses a number of territorial authority boundaries, that there is value in organising that and planning that as a whole, all this, and that, so this drafting acknowledges that, but at the same time says that where a network exists solely within a territorial authority boundary, there is potentially an argument to be made for both democratic and planning reasons for it to be transferred, and to give them, essentially to give the government options that currently don't exist. Thanks.
councillor O'Malley, do you wish to speak to this?
Point I was actually just trying to, I think this, actually, I'm happy enough with that extra addition in terms of defining that, because in fact is the crux of the matter for Dunedin, that everything is inside a territorial authority, and those systems often came into place because of a system that was outside the territorial authorities. The, there is actually though two components here, and that is, that is the ability to design the network, but then there is also the issue of we are now still forced by law to use contractors to supply the buses themselves, and I would like this discussion to still be wide enough that we can explore both components, because there's two, because even if we fix it, to, even if we, let's say the consequence was that the territorial authority now designs the bus network, the, one of the issues that's happened out on Route eighteen is that because the contract is a contract, you can't just plop another bus in there. So the contracting system itself causes rigidity in, in, in the implementation of a transport system, so I would not want to drop that out of our considerations as we go forward, so it's both what territory, what authority organises and controls the system, but also should we be running as a contract-based system, or should we actually be having this as a single department of the council?
So you would-
And so we've just got to make sure that the language doesn't exclude one, doesn't exclude the second, that's all.
So what I'm, so what I'm going to suggest is that we take a short recess, and that the two councillors who are concerned with this get together with the chief and do some wording?
Yeah.
Right, and so I'll move that we have a recess. Second councillor sustains, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried, that's five minutes, and, right, councillors, we'll, we'll get underway again, please. Now, is what's up on the screen now what's been agreed?
Happy to all parties.
Happy to all parties, right, so that's good. Has everyone had a chance, I think I'll just read this out. Added to paragraph twenty-six, excuse me, which councils can take responsibility for public transport governance and operations, including school services, rigidity in the system, poor outcomes for the public transport.
That's dot, 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 unchanged, and then a-
Yeah, carries on.
Ah, we acknowledge the value of regional-scale public transport planning where the network runs across multiple territorial authorities, where it exists solely within one territorial authority boundary, there are both planning and democratic advantages to transferring this function to the territorial authority. Happy with that. Okay, so this is an, this is an amendment, that the advice is that we process this now, so we'll be, we're voting, we're only voting on this bit at the moment, and then we'll move on to the larger one. So does anyone wish to speak to this? councillor Vandevos.
This is convoluted. It's difficult to make sense of, by the time you get to the end of it, you've forgotten what the beginning of it was, and all of it is actually, I believe, an attempt to dodge the real issue and the real solution to paragraph twenty-six, which is simply to call for a unitary authority. The issues that we have with the buses and will continue to have with the buses are the same issues that you have when you put two heads on one individual. I think we should simply change twenty-six to, let's call for a unitary authority in the interests of public transport.
I point out councillor Vandevos, that in the context of a government policy statement on transport, a suggestion for a unitary authority would be, be seen as completely irrelevant by the receiving authority, so-
At least, at least it would be understandable, your honour. Your worship.
Right, any other speakers on this particular amendment?
So the movers, Aaron and Jim.
The movers were our, were councillors Hawkins and O'Malley, indeed. Does anyone else wish to speak to this? All right, I'm going to put all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded, please.
Carried. Now, there, there was a suggestion of an additional, now going back to councillor Hawkins, additional paragraph, which is the one above, following paragraph twelve, do you, are you still keen on moving this councillor? Hawkins?
Yeah, I am. I think it should be, it probably should be a new paragraph twelve and subsequent numbering changes, but that's not-
It's an extra paragraph.
Yeah, it's an extra paragraph. Yeah, it's pretty simple, really, the, the clear direction of the government policy statement is to take the environmental, is to mitigate the environmental impacts of our land transport network, and it includes some very strong, strong wording in the objectives that it seeks to achieve. I just think in terms of the way that the GPS is structured in its draft form, it somewhat undermines that by making it a supporting priority rather than a key strategic one, and that it's just a, you know, a positive benefit of, you know, access and inclusion in the social wellbeing objectives, and I think that all of those things need to be given a similar standing in the draft to give weight to what are some well-received changes and focus and the advantages that integrated land transport planning can achieve. Thanks.
Is there a second for this, by the way? councillor Alfeso, okay. Any further speakers? Okay, I'm going to put this, this is an additional paragraph, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded, please.
Carried, thank you. Now, we'll move on to the substantive resolution.
Sorry, your worship, just checking that the word motor in the paragraph ten was a minor, thank you, that's fine.
That will be taken into account in the chief executive's edit. So do I have a mover and second, move councillor Wilson, second councillor O'Malley, for the substantive resolution, which is, as on the order paper? Would you wish to speak to it councillor Wilson?
No, your worship.
Any other speakers? councillor Vandevos.
Most of this document makes significant use of the phrase single occupant private vehicle, now I believe to become single occupant private motor vehicle. We have decided that we're going to be pedantic about the understanding of what these words mean and not include a bicycle because you can't occupy a bicycle. So given that we are talking here mostly about single occupant private motor vehicles, I submit that the Messerschmitt K200 is the only vehicle that we could be discussing, except perhaps one of- except perhaps one of councillor Hall's motorised cranes, since these are the only single occupant private motor vehicles that we are likely to encounter in our transportation. This document that wants to talk about single occupant private motor vehicles, and hope that people understand that it means cars with just one person driving them, is fraught in every respect. I'll summarise, because I know you don't want to hear me talk too long. Number five, key strategic priority. Thank you. Number five says, says the DCC supports safety as a priority. And then in the same paragraph, it says, especially for pedestrians and cyclists. When we know that cycling, being exposed and not occupying any particular vehicle, is inherently unsafe, in fact, your chances of dying on the roads are forty per cent higher if you are in an unsafe, exposed cycle mode of transport, rather than occupying a private vehicle. So the safety aspect of it, I believe, is self-contradictory, and doesn't actually deliver the key project to improve safety as claimed. Then when we get on to paragraph ten, it talks about the better management of parking to reduce subsidies for the K20, the K200 Messerschmitt and Mr Hall's crane. These subsidies, I have real difficulty in understanding, because my understanding is that the roads that we use are almost entirely paid for by car users, cars that can have a number of people in them, cars that can take the supermarket shopping home, cars that can easily go up the hill suburbs, and cars that you can take kids to school with. All of this government policy statement on land transportation is revolving around a single occupant private vehicle focus, which has got to move away from what we all use, every one of us in this room, I believe, to get anywhere unless it's a nice day, or we seem particularly keen on cycling for pleasure. All of these paragraphs in this submission, I believe, are either unclear, or they do not address your fundamental issue. In the case of paragraph twenty-six, the fundamental issue is not having a unitary council. And in the case of parking, the fundamental issue is that there has been a long history in the DCC of reducing the number of available parks, increasing massively the number of dotted yellow lines around the place, and increasing the number of impediments to cars based on a now out-of-date idea that peak oil would make oil unaffordable. Oil's not unaffordable. Electric cars are now at some of the highest levels of anywhere else in the country, I believe we have over three hundred of them here. None of this submission actually talks to a real future, it talks to an imagined one on behalf of, I believe, a number of car haters. So I will be voting against the whole thing.
Councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I didn't think we'd get there, but we did. A pay-in to the privilege of private parking in public places. Always beautiful to hear the echoes of the twentieth century ringing up in this chamber. As I read the draft GPS, actually, I was reflecting on how remarkable, and how radical of its time council's integrated transport strategy was in 2013, given the political current locally that it was swimming against. It was a political commitment to twenty-first century thinking, and of twenty-first century necessity in the way that our land transport system works. And I can't underestimate the strength of that current. It still exists, as we've just heard, but merely a ripple, thankfully. But without the higher-level funding support, though, essentially directed by the government policy statement, it was more difficult than it could be to make that a reality. And now that too, finally, has changed. And it's a relief to have government that we can work constructively with on things like transport planning, rather than, and having our community's aspirations reflected in our transport planning and funding decisions. A land transport system, that is, and I quote, that quote, "provides increased access to economic and social opportunities, enables transport choice and access, and is resilient", supporting a shift from single occupant private vehicles, which I'm sure most of us understand what that means, to more efficient, low-cost modes like walking, cycling, and public transport. One that links to our wider environmental commitments, such as achieving the Paris Agreement targets, and scaling up our contribution at a global scale. And I think that's, that's most important, actually, and it goes on to talk about transport being eighteen per cent of our emissions profile, et cetera, et cetera, and our ninth-highest per capita transport emissions of all countries with populations over one million. We have to make progress in this area if we're to do our bit in reducing, in mitigating the impacts of an unstable climate, and it's the least we can do for our low-lying and vulnerable communities who are already, already at the pointy end of that. The GPS, draft GPS is a clear signal of a vision for transport planning that aligns not just with our direction of travel and transport, but across so many of council's strategic priorities, whether they're environmental, parks and recreation, social wellbeing, or indeed economic development, whether it's our arts and infrastructure policy, whether it's our endorsement of the Global Street Design Guide, or our destination plan which aims to make this a livable city. These are all things that are aided by the direction that has been set by the draft GPS. The missing link is rail, of course, and that is acknowledged in the document, and I look forward to our inputting into the next iteration of that as it evolves. The strategic direction, strategic objectives are easy to write, though, the proof of the pudding will be in the funding. And I think my only concern really is around Dunedin being stuck in a funding no-man's land, there's obvious challenges in this being addressed in the larger cities, Auckland, Wellington and Christchurch, and we've seen some fairly hefty announcements recently to try and deal with those. And also in the draft GPS, we see mention of, you know, the supporting the provinces and through the Regional Development Fund and other mechanisms, which I note Dunedin does qualify for, but I guess, I just think that we need to be particularly vocal and active in fighting our corner as a metropolitan centre, and not be stuck between those, you know, the provincial port barrel and the congestion issues in the major centres as the funding decisions that give effect to the GPS rollout. Thank you.
Councillor O'Malley?
I just want to remind everybody that this is our submission to a government policy statement, so this is our relationship to a statement that's coming out from Wellington, not our own district plan or anything like that. So we're saying, you've got your policy statement, these are the things that we want to consider in it, these are the things that we support in it. I think they know what they define single occupancy vehicles at, I certainly hope they do. I do hope that if those measurements are coming up and down the main street, being pre-two-thousand vehicles, they've got good warranty fitnesses, and that they're registered. The councillor Hawkins brings a very good point up, that is very relevant, that I'm bringing up in the Regional Transport Committee all the time, and if you think I'm at the microphone here a lot, and that is that we must maintain our fourth centre status. And many of the things in this submission are about recognising that we are a metropolitan area, and we need a metropolitan spend on our transport. So a lot of the things that we brought in are in fact to reflect our ambitions as being one of the greatest cities in this country. Well, it's not an ambition, because we are, it's to remind people in Wellington that we are. And this, in this submission, is really just to say, it's a great plan, we like it, it has a lot to do, it aligns a lot with what we're doing, and these are the things that we want you to take into consideration. So I'm pretty happy with what was put into this document. Thank you.
Any further speakers? They're being done, I'll put it. I'm sorry? I'll write a reply, of course. Sorry.
Apologies, Your Worship, I didn't speak on, but I will now. I'm disappointed with Lee, or councillor Vandervass, for his lack of consistency, because I looked up Wikipedia, and single occupancy vehicle is well-defined there, and would have saved him many concerns. A single occupancy vehicle, SOV, is a privately operated vehicle whose only occupants, occupant is the driver. The drivers of SOVs use their vehicles primarily for personal travel, daily commuting, and for running errands. The type of vehicles include, but are not limited to, sport utility vehicles, SUVs, light duty trucks, and any combination thereof, along with all the various van and car sizes, but will generally be taken to exclude human-powered vehicles such as bicycles. This term is used by transportation engineers and planners. Dot, 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 dot. I know that councillor Vandervass is very fond of Wikipedia and generally refers to that, so I'm disappointed he hasn't done it this time. I'm also disappointed, as a previous chair, deputy chair of Infrastructure Services, and as a councillor that has sat through ten, I think, annual plans, that he isn't aware of the rate contribution for roading, which adversely, depending on which activity status, is thirty-three to fifty or sixty per cent, and sometimes a hundred per cent. So as a rate payer who bikes and drives, I know some rate payers don't have cars and contribute substantially to the roading network through their rates. It isn't just a car levy at all. And I'm really also concerned that people don't realise that getting single-use vehicle, sorry, single occupancy vehicles off the roads, the biggest beneficiaries to that are not the bikers or other people wanting to walk, it's actually the freight network working effectively and efficiently for the city to benefit both industry and the economic development of the city, but also benefiting the consumer, long-term with the decreased costs of the transport network. That is why we're doing these things, it's for the benefit of, so that the country can work efficiently. So that's why I'm supporting this, I think the government's given some very good directions in the changes, adding the environment in as a goal, in the first place was the effect of the-
Last night I was coming down Factory Road in Moskew.
Councillor, this is the writer reply, there's no speakers after that.
Yeah, sorry. The environment has been included in the process, for the first time as a strategic pillar, I'm very happy to see it upgraded. I think that's exactly where the G Government Policy Statement Two is heading anyway, so why not reflect it now? And so I'm very happy to see that amended, and people, sorry.
That's right.
So, thank you.
Right. That being the last speaker, I'm going to put it. Is there some? Right. I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? That's carried, okay. Right. Item twenty, submission on the Targa Regional Council Long-Term Plan. Thank you, Nick. Now, do you wish to preface this with any remarks, or do you have to go straight to questions? Okay. All right, so questions, councillors? Councillor Wilson?
Question, I think, for the CEO, and the suggestions that have come out of the public forum today about the peninsula, and that's added in here as an item that may be considered under bus services. I'm just wondering whether, given what is in the GPS, we've just done in the GPS about bus services, we should be considering an interim joint equal management structure as, with the Regional Council and offering, members of the council, whether, I actually mean at this table, to, as part of this process, to the Regional Council for a joint management governance committee, on equal terms. And in that way, we're actually being able to transition to exactly the point we've just made in the GPS, and whether that is a process that would be appropriate as part of the submission.
Can I just, just let me tease that out a bit? I understand when we had our quick chat, you were going to suggest a joint governance committee comprising two or three people from here, and two or three people from the ORC on an equal basis to govern, as a subcommittee of both councils, I guess, and that's not, we can explore that. Are you now suggesting a joint governance slash management committee that also has staff on it?
No, no, it was very much at that other level, that, and that we could offer that as part of the process of fixing, but also consistent with the submissions we've just done on the GPS.
There's a, we are, as you'll see here, this submission is at high-level points, and we've said we will circulate this because of the timeframes for final, so we certainly could, if there's a, well, you know, if there's a wish around the table, propose under that top part, and you will all get to see it and give your, give your feedback on the detail as it, as it gets written down. We would like to propose a joint governance subcommittee between the two councils for governing provision of public transport in Dunedin. There's no problem at all with us proposing that, the detail of how, we'll work that out, but there's certainly no problem with proposing it.
Further questions? Councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. It's just a question of process, I suppose, just trying to get a handle on how you're planning to advance this. Are we going to vote on each of these high-level bullet points, or a whole?
We, I think, as with the previous submission, I'll probably treat it the same way. If there are suggestions as to additions or amendments, I'll ask for them to be brought up before we go to the final vote on the, so I take it that after we've finished question time, councillor Wilson, for instance, will be suggesting another paragraph, and we can vote on that, and then, and I'm happy to take any others, and then we'll-
I would suggest we don't write out the individual words, because the words will come round for circulation. So we just talk about any ideas that you want raised, and seek agreement between you all about putting those ideas here, so the staff can then draft the submission, rather than crafting the actual words here.
I need to reinforce that. We won't, what I want is intentions here, and get a majority view on what the intent is. The wording, the final wording will be submitted by the CEO, but, so I'm, I'm not seeking the final wording here, but I, we do need to get consensus on what the intent is in any individual case. Right.
So that extra thing that Ms Graham just added was, although it's not here, standing orders, we would circulate this, people will have their comments, final decisions will may get circulated, we will then lodge it with the ORC, and then retrospectively, we would, we would send this mission, but retrospectively, we will lodge that submission through to come here to next council meeting, and standing orders do allow that.
Right. Any further questions, and then I'll give councillor Gary.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Ms Bavdeke, for faithfully recording our requests. So, and I can raise this in the next section, Your Worship, but I suggested the dredge the eastern channel point, but in fact, that can be taken care of as part of the establishing the harbour liaison group. And my suggestion is going to be that the notes from that forum, which were recorded, the key request out of that was the formation of the group, but all of the community wishes, and it represented a hundred and fifty people from many different organisations, both land and harbour-related, so it was a really good widespread of community wishes, includes the dredging of the eastern channel, but many, many other things besides. So I'll be requesting that those notes be attached to our submission, if everyone's in agreement. And I guess my question was, is there a problem with that?
I'm just working through how we're going to address this. On, in the item that you've got, the topics that have been proposed for inclusion, rather than go through them individually, I'm going to ask if anyone has any objection to any one of them, and then we'll know what to leave out or what to put in. And if there's no objection to any one of them, then we can vote on additions that have only just come up, and vote on these as a block. So councillor Hawkins?
Thank you. No substantive objections, so long as the point that was raised in advance of this meeting around the use of coal was broadened to be around investing in the transition away from coal- as a heat source rather than banning it, in which point I, because if it stays as drafted, I can't support that.
I think when the wording comes around, you'll be able to raise that when the wording comes around for staff. But yes, we're aware of that, so make sure you put that feedback in with the final wording.
I thought I'd sent it, maybe I just sent it to council.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see it. I mean, it might be there, but...
Councillor Lord.
Yeah, well, I was just going to say the same thing. I couldn't support a ban on coal and in fact, I just felt it would penalise the people that we want to have the warmest zones the most.
Yeah. That'll come down, you're happy with the, you're happy with the response from the chief that the wording will come round and it'll be, it'll be about transition, not...
That'll be in the wording for the submission when it comes around, not now. So, we've taken that on board, that did get received. We'll write it around transitioning away from coal for household heating and you guys will get to give that feedback when we actually write the detailed wording of the submission, but we'll write it up in that fashion.
Just in, sorry, just before we...
So, why are we approving it, not just noting it?
Well, we're approving it, if you're the only objection to the inclusion of that at all, then it's going to go through on a majority vote anyway. What I'm looking for is substantive opposition to any one of these. But as the chief says, the final word on the wording will come round for comment anyway. Councillor Benson Pope.
In respect to the first item, I'm assuming that the three discussions we've had today about bus routes will also populate that first section, for example.
Okay, councillor O'Malley.
Might be a new item, I just realised. With the heavy freight movement through the Steamer Basin, do we want to have some discussion with the ORC as the owners of the port as to how we'll deal with that? Can we put that in here or we just deal with that at some other time or by itself?
I think it will be dealt, will need to be dealt...
Or by itself later.
I think it will need to be dealt with in the context of the development of the Harbour Basin.
Okay, so I'll just leave it out at this point, it doesn't need to go.
Yep, yeah. Councillor Vandevos.
Councillor Gary wants to attach unseen notes to the submission. Councillor Benson Pope wants things written about bus routes in it. And as a process, I find it really awkward that we don't have wording in front of us, that we could actually have some chance of debating and agreeing to. I cannot agree with attaching unseen notes to a submission. I cannot agree with a submission that is just going to include some things about bus routes that have already been discussed. If we're going to make a submission, I think we need to have the wording precise. We need to have it here, we need to have it in advance, we need to have it so that it can be looked at dispassionately, rationally and debated. I don't see any of that happening under the current process.
Well, councillor Gary's suggestion, I'm happy, insofar as it's new to what has been circulated, I'm happy to have it voted on here. But the process has always been that we wouldn't have the final wording here now and I would suggest that if we endeavoured to, we'd be still here tomorrow, so... And councillor Benson Pope's suggestion that isn't here either? Councillor Benson Pope just wanted, as I understood it, an inclusion of what has always, already been said in public, so it's not a secret to anybody. Already agreed, sorry. So... So, what's already agreed with the motion? Who's asked it, who's voted on it? What's the wording?
As part of the previous discussion, it's not equivocal, it's quite clear and it was agreed on a vote of the council. That's all I'm assuming, that decisions that have just been made like that, which are our policy now, will populate a section on bus.
That's where it was agreed. Councillor Gary.
Can I just clarify, Your Worship, that that document I'm talking about was actually circulated around councillors in the last couple of days and Pam has it also, and it's simply to record what the community commented on. It wasn't for us to debate or declare. And it might be that we don't agree, it should be attached. It may be that it's sent directly to ORC, I'm fairly relaxed about that.
So... So, the additions that are proposed to... The additions that are proposed are that, A, councillor Gary's suggestion that we attach the notes from the harbour meeting, just attach them, which have been circulated, and is there any...
And to remove the dredging comment at the start because it's part of those matters that would be considered by that liaison group. So, that doesn't need to be...
You're moving that, is there a second for that, please? Councillor Benson Pope, do you wish to speak to it, councillor Gary?
Yes, what I would like to say is that that was a part of a theme for the Heritage Festival and I recall walking into that forum expecting there to perhaps be thirty people tops. There was a hundred and fifty people from a variety of extensive organisations, as I said, land and sea based, around the city and they represented a great deal more people. The list is simply a record of the points that were made by the community at that forum and the key outcome was a request for the formation of a harbour stakeholder group in the near future. And that was agreed to by the parties, the panel that appeared, including yourself, Your Worship, Edward Allison from the Ruunaka, Porto Tago, representative Yacht in New Zealand, representative University of Tago and ORC. And in fact, the ORC have gone on record as saying that they are prepared to lead that harbour forum and so it's really just to move that along and put this on record. But as I said, I'm very relaxed about whether that is attached or whether it just is sent straight to the ORC, which I'm happy to do. So, there's no problem about that whatsoever.
Well, in this instance, your resolution or your motion is that it be attached.
Indeed.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Wilson.
Just have a question on that and because it's not dissimilar to a motion that I put up about three years ago for a joint harbour working group, which is still on our books but was turned down by the regional council. And in the papers that you, councillor Gary, actually was described for, it says it doesn't give one lead agency and I'm just wondering whether it should be a joint committee or joint liaison group rather than having one lead agency. Because we have many assets in the harbour that we should be leading understanding on and that's things like wharves and stone walls and things like that. That, and I'm not quite sure that it should be led necessarily by only one agency. That's the only point of contention, otherwise I'm particularly happy with it.
Oh, can I clarify that the motion is to attach the notes, not to recommend any particular, for formation of anything in particular?
That's absolutely fine. And in the page ninety-seven, it does to be led by the ORC, but that's inconsistent with the scribed notes and so to that point, I'm very happy.
Any further speakers to this particular one? All right, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against?
Abstained because I don't know what notes we're attaching and I don't approve of the process in any event.
Okay, now, I seem to recall, can I ask councillors to be clear when they vote? I thought I heard a no there, but it was a murmur. So, can, so no, but okay, it's carried, but please be a bit clearer, a bit more audible, if you would, because I...
Eyes to nose, it's lost anyway, isn't it? As you rightly point to there, but I'm...
I find it difficult to hear if there is a no, if it's just a murmur or I don't know whether it's just people talking. So, just for the sake of clarity, I need audibility. Okay, now we go on to the next one. Is there a mover and second one? That the ORC give consideration to establishing a joint subcommittee of three ORC and three DCC councillors to govern public transport in Dunedin. Moved councillor Wilson, second and councillor O'Malley. Do you wish to speak to it, councillor Wilson?
Only to say that I think it's... Committee. I just think it's consistent with everything else that's already been debated and we might as well be acting on it sooner than later if we one day want to be governing them.
Any further speakers, councillor O'Malley?
Pretty much same thing. This model operates in the Christchurch metropolitan area and it would be, if this can operate fine, then I don't see us necessarily having to go any further with this, but it would be a good step. Thank you.
Any further speakers? Now, just noting that it's a joint committing, not a joint subcommittee. Councillor Vandevos.
Joint committee implies that you've got two involved parties. At this point, I don't see that we have any authority or that we have any willingness for the other party to join in this Clayton's Unitry Committee. If we are going to propose something joint with the regional council, I believe that we need to discuss it with them first in the first instance and not to publicly or even non-publicly decide that we're going to do something that involves another council that have their own ideas about what we should be doing. I think if we had someone here from the regional council who thought this was a good idea and agreed that we would have benefits in having this joint liaison group, I would be obviously all in favour. It would be a step in the right direction, but for us to actually do it unilaterally from one side, it sounds like a shotgun marriage to me, I can't, I can't vote for it.
Well, at the risk of being pedantic, I would point out that this is exactly what you're demanding that we do, which is make a request to the ORC. That's, that's what this is, it's a submission. Councillor Laufisso.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm, I'm just mindful of the meeting that we had with ORC councillors and staff, was it last week? And I just see this motion as a follow-up to that and also Mr Pope's spoken request at the public forum today that the city council support the peninsula families and residents in their efforts to persuade the ORC to take the children, schoolchildren seriously as commuters and users of a bus service. So, I just, that's why I'll be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Further speakers? There being none, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded, please.
Carried. Thank you. Now, the final one is actually, is I take an amendment rather than a new, it's a note that...
So, this is a change or a clarification in the air quality section, which we haven't written yet, but we will write it bearing in mind that people have asked for a transition away from. You will get to approve the final wording.
You move councillor Benson Pope.
Oh, second, but my intention in the amendment was to include the word investment, so it's investing in the transition away from the use of coal, which is a slightly different thing.
Okay, as long as that's understood. Any speakers to this? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carried. Okay, now, that we've got the additions and amendments out of the road, we go to the substantive resolution, which is on the order paper. And just to reiterate, the points that will be in, the submission points that will be in there are the ones that are on page ninety-seven here that have been, that have come from council plus those that we've just voted on. So, that's what we're voting on now. Is there a mover? Moved councillor Newell, second and councillor Benson Pope. Do you wish to speak to this councillor Newell? Are there other speakers? I'm going to put...
Sorry, on the understanding, Your Worship, that the process that's in paragraph seven will be followed, a draft will come out, there'll be the opportunity for further councillor comment, which will be...
Exactly as per the report.
Right, thank you.
Can, sorry, can you tell me who...
Moved councillor Newell, second and councillor Benson Pope. There being no speakers, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against?
No, recorded, please.
Yep, carried. Right. Item twenty-one, update on the heads of agreement with accident compensation corporation. This is, are there any questions of the chief executive who is named here as speaking to this report? Is there any, anyone seeking any information? Councillor Vandevos.
Does this put to a complete end any liability or any suggestion of liability that we may have between us and the ACC? Is this an end of this particular suggestion? I believe an MOU that was signed a while back.
Given that we had no liability, we can't guarantee you that it's an end to people suggesting we did because they continue to suggest we did even though we made it clear that we didn't.
So, to answer the question, this is an end of that issue?
Well, there has never been an issue and I can't begin to presume whether people will stop pretending that there was.
So, to put it another way, does the MOU now lapse?
Yes, this entire report is letting you know that the MOU now lapses.
Thank you. Now, this has been, if there are no further questions, this has been moved councillor Lord, second and councillor Hall. Do you wish to speak?
I don't need to speak.
You don't need to speak to it, okay? Are there any other speakers? There being none, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Okay, on to item twenty-two. Notice of motion on the proposed bus route changes. It's a notice of motion from councillors Benson Pope and Stedman. So, I invite, well, I'll invite questions of the two movers, if that's okay with you, in case anyone seeks any clarity on this. So, does anyone have any questions of the movers of this, of the proposers of this resolution? There being none, councillor...
I was just going to ask, just because I want to understand the process. So, this is that the buses will no longer be able to use George Street because we're doing it all up? Or, well...
I was going to provide that clarity in my, in my speaking to the motion, so I'll answer that.
Okay, righto. Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. And again, this may be, may well be addressed in the movers' opening remarks, but just whether this as worded, if it's progressed, would make a statement about whether or not any form of public transport of any mode or fuel source would ever run down George Street and whether that's been considered as the way this is, this is worded. Because this could be read as saying there will never be public transport running down our main street and that may be the intention, but I'm not sure.
Well, I guess, following up on that, I guess what you're indicating is the possibility that, for instance, in the future, there might be a small electric shuttle service in that area. So, I wonder whether current bus services be substituted for that bus routes because that leaves it open, but it's a suggestion to consider, given the question from councillor Hawkins, because... You can't. Oh, you can't amend it, all right. Oh, well, then we'll just... Oh, you haven't moved it, so it's a suggestion for you to consider as you speak. Right, if there are no further, councillor O'Malley, did you have a question?
Anything that we pass one year can be met with another resolution later that would override it, could it not? Yeah, so...
Councillor Hall.
My understanding of the second paragraph is only buses accessing, accessing the new bus hub. So, it wouldn't, any shuttles, it wouldn't affect.
Anyway, if there are no, councillor Wilson.
Sorry, I just, in reading the motion, I'm just checking whether this relates to buses going to, in the, in the reverse order as well, because this only talks about leaving... Yeah, you're going to cover that.
Okay, councillor Vandervass?
Does this motion presume that we are going to be spending 60 million on George Street, and that we are going to be excluding buses from this area?
Sorry, I'm not quite sure. Right, okay. It'll be answered in the, in, in the proposer.
Well, I, I would like the question answered now, because I wish to speak to it, depending on what the answer is.
Well, you will get a chance to speak to it, because the proposer of the motion will be the first speaker, and you would be following him in any case. So if there are, if there are no further questions, I'll invite the proposer to speak.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm mindful of the standing order, which I'm drawing also to my colleague councillor Hawkins' attention in respect of his subsequent notice of motion in term 26/4, which determine, which rules on the potential to change notices of motion, and the need to do it before it's moved. And I haven't yet moved the motion. So I'll speak to the issues that have been raised. I've tried to keep this wording as simple as possible. And yes, in terms of councillor Wilson's question, it does refer to the reverse route. For, to freshen, to refresh councillor's memory about what is currently proposed in respect of bus routes in George Street and the bus hub, is that buses approaching from the north plan to exit George Street at St Andrews Street, turning left, and then right into Great King Street to access the bus hub. Buses going the other direction follow the same route in reverse. To the south, buses exit Great King Street into More Place, circuit the lower half of More Place, and turn left into Prince's Street at the More Place-Prince's Street intersection. So I'm not discussing that end of town. The reason for moving this now is because whether or not we do street works and urban design works in George Street, the roads are going to be dug up, without question, because of the service replacement, which is the catalyst for the urban design work of a scale yet to be determined, of a scale yet to be planned, actually, let alone properly designed and executed and contracted. As part of those changes, whichever route is followed to the north of the bus hub, there are intersection changes required, which will be expensive to curb lines, to turning circles, and possibly to varandas. Therefore, because, when, whenever that might be, whenever the buses are unable to use George Street, the two blocks of George Street currently designated for their use, because of the work that we are going to do digging it up, those changes would have to be duplicated elsewhere, namely, most likely, Frederick Street intersection. On top of all that, in the discussions, the workshops we've had, two or three, I can't remember, certainly two, in respect of design and our desire lines and our ideas about what's priority and what's not for the central city upgrade, it seems to me there was a very strong support for removing the heavy vehicles at that Frederick Street intersection, which seems entirely logical to me, because the next blocks, much in all, as we're also going to do some work, as currently planned as far as Albany, to link with the campus, which is highly desirable, and I certainly support. But it seems to me the real entry point with the most potential for the central city is that Five Street-Frederick Street-George Street intersection. And so it seemed logical to me, because inevitably the buses will not be able to go further sometime, to actually make a clear statement to the ORC that we, as road controlling authority, have made a decision that that's what's going to happen. I thank councillor Hawkins for, for raising the issue of some sort of inner-city loop or shuttle, given the number of times I've advocated it. I'd like to keep this simple at the moment. At such time as we find that we can organise, fund, resource an appropriate low-emission or electric vehicle, then we can introduce a new motion. But in whatever case, an established bus route would be the Frederick Street left turn, the right turn into, into Great King Street, straight past the current operating hospital, which I'm pleased to convey is seen as a considerable advantage by the local advisory group, and continuing on to Great King Street. In the other direction, they'd follow the same route, north along Great King, left into Frederick, and right into George Street. So, you know, I really don't want to complicate the description of the route, because I don't think there's any lack of clarity about it. It seems to me that it's the only sensible choice to make, given that certainly the current configuration of large diesel buses, often of an older generation, shall we say, don't fit with what I believe should be the look of the new urban design space, whenever we get there, whatever, however it's configured. That's not to say that I will change my view about the desirability of some sort of shuttle, inner-city shuttle of some configuration, that makes a further link around Prince's Street, the Exchange, the campus, the Queen's Gardens, whatever. And, and as I understand, and I've certainly asked, and I think that's happened, that the chief executive has raised that with the ORC, to see if that's the sort of thing that can be progressed. We know there are quite exciting trials of autonomous vehicles, electric vehicles anyway, in Christchurch, based around the art gallery. And I think that something like that may be the future. So it seems to me this is a pragmatic, a pragmatic notice of motion that I hope is now completely clear. I think I've answered all the questions that were raised. If not, I will have the opportunity in a right of reply, and I will now move what's on the order paper.
And it's seconded councillor Stedman. Okay, right. The speaker's councillor Vandervass?
Councillor Benson-Pope has just made, in his clarification, which I appreciate, a number of statements which I find truly remarkable. First of all, he says roads are going to be dug up. Without doubt, that's true, it happens all the time. When they dig up North Road, they can dig up half of it, and the buses just go around the other half, and you get someone, someone standing there with a flag to direct them. The idea that we're going to make such an enormous digging up of George Street, that vehicles are not going to be able to pass, is of extreme concern to me, because if vehicles aren't going to be able to pass several blocks of George Street, I think this bodes very seriously for any retailers in that area. Councillor Benson-Pope went on to say that because of the work that we are going to do, inevitably buses will not be able to go through at some time. I don't believe that this is correct. I don't believe that it is necessary to prevent vehicles from going through. I note councillor Benson-Pope's bias against large diesel buses of an older generation, and being of an older generation myself, I am actually really rather fond of some of the large diesel buses that he is obviously extremely unhappy to have going down our main street. My main concern is the assumption, and this motion is based entirely on this assumption, that we will have several blocks of George Street cut off, and buses unable to be able to, to quote the words, inevitably buses will not be able to go through at some time. I believe that this would be an extremely unfortunate way for us to deal with underground infrastructure that needs renewing in George Street. There's late-night work that in most western countries is, is the time to do this kind of work when there are no buses running anyway. There is the obvious situation where you simply close one half of the road, and do the infrastructure on that side, and let the traffic use the other half. You might even want to remove some of the parking temporarily to accommodate some of the digging up. But the statement that inevitably buses will not be able to go through at some time, I believe is not supported. And if it were to be the case, that would be, I, I believe, a serious problem, not just for retailers, but for all users of our main street. This notice of motion advising the regional council, I believe, is not appropriate. It's based on ideas which I don't believe are the case. And the idea that we basically tell the regional council what they're going to do, I think is not going to be, is not something that, that we should enter into without really strong evidence. I see no evidence here at all for this situation arising, and hope that we will vote against telling the regional council what they will be doing, based on a, a project in a digging up, which I certainly hope won't happen.
Councillor Wilson?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm going to say a couple of words, and then I've just got one question for the CEO, if that's all right. The, the comment I want to make is that I'm excited, and I'm presuming that this is informed, but I maybe I'm incorrect by the mover and seconder, knowing that possibly having had discussions with businesses, that they'd rather have the streets dug up quickly and fast and dealt with in a different way than normal, and that it would allow for pedestrians, but not necessarily cars to go through there, so that they're unaffected, or they're affected for as short a time as possible. And I'm presuming that that's the case, but maybe I'm wrong. So that's why I'm going to be supporting it. The question I have for the CEO, though, is that having, this having been a notice of motion, which was gratefully received earlier than some, and has been noted, I'm just wondering whether you've had the opportunity to talk to the regional council about it, and whether they are supportive or not of it?
Yes, I have. I've discussed it with the chief executive. Got back in writing that her team are really happy to work with us on this. We're all aware that the hospital is going to be somewhere in those environs, and the hospital's long been seen as a major destination point for bus, for buses. And she said they're quite happy to work with us on sending the buses one block that way.
Councillor O'Malley?
I'd actually like to move to table this motion, because while I'm generally in support of it, I've got some things that I'm seeing here that I'm not sure that without a report, we could have considered well enough. And, and because of the vagaries of standing orders, and not being able to hear what councillor Benson-Pope's idea was, and then go into a question session, but now just being able to speak and waiting for the right of reply, I've got things that are associated around interactions between a large number of students. I mean, in that body, in that block between Frederick and Hanover, you have the School of Pharmacy, you have the Anatomy Department, you have Physiology Departments, and you have the Pathology Department, and then across the road, you have the Dental School. So we'll be sending an awful lot of buses into an area that have a very high foot traffic in that area. And then they come up to the five-way intersection at George Street, and then have to do a right-hand turn. So until we've seen a traffic plan analysis on the impact of that, I'd be reluctant to say that this is actually what we're planning on right now, and that's why I'm not against the idea of doing it. I understand the intent is to move buses further along George Street before doing that turn up onto George Street. But I would like to know the impacts of traffic movements. And in that regard, I don't really want to vote yes or no at this point, because I feel I don't have the information, I need to make the decision.
So-
So I'd like to put the motion that we table this.
So you make, this is a procedural motion?
Yep.
And-
Point of order. Procedural motions can only be put by people who haven't spoken, and I think it's hard to argue that that wasn't a, that wasn't speaking to the motion. I'm comfortable with someone else doing it.
Oh, well, my reason, I was giving the reason for putting the procedural motion forward.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm comfortable-
Okay, that's my ignorance of standing orders.
Councillor O'Malley explaining why he's putting the notice, putting the procedural motion. As I understand it, and I'll be guided by Sandy, procedural motions have got to be voted on without debate. So I'm going to put, is there a seconded for the procedural motion to lay this on the table? Seconded councillor Vandervass? Well, I can do it here. So what's been pointed out to me is that there are two options if this procedural motion proceeds, that the, the item of business being discussed should lie on the table and not be further discussed at this meeting at all, or that the item being discussed should be adjourned to a specific time and place and not be further discussed at the meeting. So which, it's up to you as the mover of the procedural motion.
Move to a later time. Well, the issue was, can we get information in between to, to deal with that, or do we, do we just not do it now?
The head of transport's on his honeymoon, so it's pretty difficult for us to get details at this point of what the centre city plan are going to look like. You might be ways to wait three months, and then we'll have some centre city plan diagrams and things. I mean, the ORC already know we are thinking this might be one of the options that's coming to you, so that gives us some time. And at that point, we re-raise it, and if we're not quite ready, we can defer again, eh? August council meeting?
Well, no, hang on. No, I need a specific, I'm giving the mover of the procedural motion, as has his right, I'm telling him what his options are. And so either it's just lie on the table and no specified time, and not be discussed further at this meeting, or you can specify a time and place, but still don't discuss it any further at this meeting.
If we leave it at no specified time, then the CEO can come back with when she thinks it could be done? Well, can we pick it up? I don't want to get in the way of it. I just want to basically pause for a second, so we can get a traffic report.
We could have it reintroduced. I mean, we could move it again.
Choice.
Yeah, I want to know the implications of the two. So basically, if I say at no specific time, then, then that allows it to be brought up again at some time in the future.
And I suggest, Mr Chairman, I'd be quite happy, if the meeting were happy, for it to be referred to the Infrastructure Services Committee or the Planning and Environment Committee, so that the information that's being asked for can be provided by our transport people.
Perfect. No, perfect. Yep.
Thank you. So, still has to be voted on.
Yes.
So what has been moved as a procedural motion, just to explain, there'll be no opportunity for anyone to speak to it, is that this be laid on the table and referred to the next, I assume, Infrastructure and Services Committee, for the information that is requested to be provided. That is the, that is the effect of the motion. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? It's carried. Okay, we move on to the next, next notice of motion. Item 23. Now, I guess I should, we should just give, follow the same procedure as last time. If there are any questions of clarification of the movers who haven't moved it yet, I'm hastin to say.
Apparently not, that's news to me.
It seems to be the precedent. So I'm calling for questions of the movers. Councillor Benson-Pope?
In case my earlier reference to the standing order was too oblique, I'm wondering if the mover and seconder would consider including route changes in the motion.
Sorry, that's, I understand, a clerical error, in that a subsequent notice of motion had been lodged that did take care of that, that hadn't somehow made its way to the agenda, but that was what was lodged. Yep.
So it's route and scheduling?
Yeah.
Right. So just to be clear, what's being requested is clarification. Number two, the second part of it calls on the Rataga Regional Council to accommodate the request for minor route and scheduling changes. That's good. Further questions? Councillor Vandervass?
I, I understand that that might have been originally the intention, but does standing orders permit us to do that to this agenda?
Yes. Any further questions? Well, there are none, so I will call on, invite the mover to speak to this and move it.
Thank you. Happy to move, as, as per the amendment to what appeared on- Happy to move as per the amendment to what appeared on our order paper. Regardless of this organisation's appetite to change it running the buses, as we still have to point out on a fairly regular basis, is not a function of this body, but advocating for our citizens and advocating on behalf of our community almost certainly is and always will be. We have a strategic framework now supported by the government's general direction and priorities that aims to give people choice in how they travel around the city, how they travel to work, how they travel to rugby games and concerts, and yes, even how they travel to school to and from. I, for my sins, read and heard all of the submissions in writing and in person that were made to the regional council's 2014 Regional Public Transport Plan, which was adopted by the regional council, and the rollout of that is almost entirely complete. The private operators who ran the contracted services that have subsequently been withdrawn as a commercial decision, that they've said has been as a result of the new timetables and routes, it would be fair to say, did not signal that particularly clearly as that process went through. And had that been the case, you can bet we would have had far more submissions from concerned parents on the peninsula and we would have had a better opportunity to design timetables and routes that better accommodated those needs, you know, as part of the commuted timetable, because as has been pointed out, they are indeed commuters. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case, but it's disappointing that the regional council aren't more interested in even considering a review of the service until all of the timetabling and network changes have been rolled out and then the bus hub is operational, whenever that might be, and then a few months after that to see what effect that has. And then, you know, it's Christmas and then sometime next year, we might get some traction in reviewing that. This motion is in support of those peninsula families who want a more fit-for-purpose schedule and/or route. I didn't list the changes in the motion because I don't think there would be any resistance from Mr Graham or Mr Pope to making amendments to what they've stated their ambitions were, should the regional council be open to more constructive dialogue about what those changes might be. And I think that's a decision best left to the affected parties on the peninsula, and I think this supports whatever they decide works for their community. I think it's important to note that I applaud the general thrust of the Regional Public Transport Plan and the move towards increasing patronage, which we are seeing increasing patronage, and that is to be aborted through increased frequency, simpler timetables, more direct routes, and for some fortunate souls, even cheaper fares. That's what evidence tells us makes for a more desirable service. Expecting dozens of kids to wait for thirteen minutes in one single south-facing bus shelter in the middle of winter does seem to undermine the desirability of that service somewhat. Surely it's possible to be flexible around the edges without setting some kind of dangerous precedent that sets us down the path that we have previously been on with our bus network, where we had something like a hundred and twelve route variations, depending on the day of the week or the time of the day or where you might live. We've talked about, we've talked ad infinitum about the transfer of operations. There's obviously safety concerns around the lack of integration and the way that our transport network is managed, the regional council will say, and they're quite right, legally, their concerns around safety are from bus stop to bus stop, and when someone gets off the bus, then that's no longer their concern. And while that is legally the case, that doesn't mean it's right. It's just another argument for the territorial authority in this case to have control over that function so that we can integrate those safety concerns. And also, as mentioned in our submission to the GPS, I think there's a democratic deficit in that regardless of whether our Dunedin representatives on the Ataga Regional Council unanimously support greater investment or changes to our public transport system, there will always only be six votes out of twelve at the regional authority, which makes it a pretty hard road for our community to get positive change and greater investment and a more fit-for-purpose bus service that meets this community and this city's ambitions and aspirations, whether they're economic, social, environmental, or otherwise. We're spending tens of millions of dollars on road safety improvements in the peninsula and on transport choices. Adding unnecessary car movements before and after school just seems somewhat counterproductive to the aim. What I'm hopeful will happen, and I urge our colleagues at the regional council to take a more open-minded approach and a more timely approach to engaging in this conversation with the peninsula communities. And I reassure them to resolve this and reassure them that this body, I seek to reassure them that this body of their elected representatives supports their efforts to achieve that. Thanks.
councillor Wilson.
Worship, just taking it up from the final parts of councillor Hawkins' submission, I want to, I'd really ax over this call for this notice of motion because in many ways I think that what the ORC have tried to do, and as matter of principle, in the regional passenger transport plan and to simplify the whole plan is correct. And that's what they're trying to do, but it shouldn't be the rule. And this is a clear case for an exception. And the reason that this isn't necessarily one that will be followed in other areas of Dunedin is that we're at the very time we need to get people onto buses in the peninsula because of the work that is going to be happening there, as councillor Hawkins referred to, with the roadworks happening in that area. It is the very, very time that we need to try and reduce traffic. So to that end, I think we've got a really good case for an exception here. I think we've, while I understand the sentiment of councillor Hawkins, it would have been perhaps better if the wording had been to support a call on the Ataga Regional Council, and that I want to support the regional council as veering off their usual plan with this and encourage them rather than dictate to them. I think that's the tone that this has been given on, and to give them some assurance that the Dunedin city public understand a compromise and encourage them to compromise. And I think we need to encourage them in that way. And therefore, despite the best of intent in their plan and the hard road that they, I think the changes they're suggesting have made a rod for their back, really, and that they really have to listen to that. It's a very special case in this case and acquiesce to their requests.
The speaker is councillor Vandevos. Oh, councillor, sorry, councillor Gary, and then...
Thank you, your worship. In 2014, as the former or then-chair of the Ataga Peninsula Community Board, I made a submission on the bus services and one of the points I made was as follows: the deletion of school bus services does not, we understand, apply to peninsula school bus services. That is what we were told at the time. Now, it was to everyone's surprise that that bus service was deleted. It was done very suddenly and it took the community by surprise. The community is not asking for a dedicated bus service. They are signalling that there is a significant number of commuters who wish to catch the bus. And today we were given some very solid statistics that were different to the ones that we had previously been given. Those were given in good faith too, but I do trust these as being current and committed statistics. The Regional Public Transport Plan, you might be interested to know, includes peak-time service hours as three to six p.m. on page fifty-seven. Three regular routes are specified as having a peak-time half-hourly service, Waverley, bus number nineteen, Peninsula, bus number eighteen, and Mozgill, bus number seventy-seven. Of the three, only the peninsula service does not start the half-hourly at three p.m. And that is one of the points that has been made by the concerned parents, is if that was introduced, that would take care of the afternoon ride home. The one aspect that I really want to emphasise is around road safety. And as a parent of a former student who caught the bus, sometimes the school bus, sometimes the town bus, because she was going to a city school, Ataga Girls' High School, so she had that choice, and she was lucky in that she got off the bus and had about a ten-minute walk, but it was not across major highways. Now, as a parent of a student that has grown up on the peninsula and went off to high school at year nine, it was still of great concern to us around those first few months because our kids are just not streetwise in terms of crossing the road. Doesn't matter how responsible the parents are, it doesn't matter how many road safety courses they might have done at primary school, they just simply don't have the experience. And so that is of real concern and why I feel so passionate about this, because I am genuinely concerned about the safety of these youngsters. We've had a very clear message from this community about what they are asking for, that they want to catch the public transport. And the ORC, I understand it's not as simple as it seems, but they do seem to be entrenched in their view. I want to read to you, and if you'll indulge me, colleagues, because I know you've heard this before, but I want to read to you to give the last word to, from a twelve-year-old student at Tohono Intermedia who comes from the peninsula, because for me, it's advocacy for these youngsters that's so important. So he was asked by his father what would be the worst thing about not being able to catch the bus from school to home, and there were three things he said. First of all, he's scared. He's scared that he would have to cross the road lots of times. And he's not scared for himself but for his mates who he reckons can't run away from a car faster than he could. His father says he's terrified of him having to cross all the roads to walk the one point nine, nine-eight kilometres to the Turner's auction bus stop from Tohono Intermedia. Secondly, he was worried about walking to school late each morning. He didn't want to arrive at school an hour early, as in the winter it's still dark and the school isn't open yet. But the alternative was to arrive late and he was really upset this would make his teachers mad. Thirdly, he just wanted to know why kids aren't considered important enough to get to school safely. And so that is why I've seconded this motion and encourage you to support it because this is about advocacy for our youngsters.
councillor Vandevos.
I'm disappointed in what I see as an extraordinary arrogance around the table from us, the DCC, previous owners of a rather poorly-run bus system, telling the ORC what it is they must do. Councillor Wilson has said that she wants to encourage the ORC rather than dictate to them, as if we ever have any mandate to dictate or encourage anything that the ORC want to do. Councillor Gary has said that the ORC don't want to listen. Councillor Hawkins has said that it's disappointing that the ORC are not interested in reviewing their service until current changes have been tested. It is none of our business what the ORC do with their bus system, especially considering they have the experience with running it, they have made a lot of significant changes, changes which recently have produced unprecedented increases in bus patronage. And what they have signalled to us is that they want these changes to settle so that they can actually look at what the overall bus service does, which is their responsibility. Councillor Hawkins has said that it's our responsibility to advocate on behalf of our community. Our community thinks we run the buses. And with all these councillors standing here today saying how these buses must be run on the peninsula, no wonder they think the DCC runs the buses. I wonder, actually, whether councillors, some of them around this table, think that we run the buses and that it's just the ORC to be encouraged or dictated to regarding how that's carried out. The motion calls on the Ataga Regional Council to accommodate their request for minor scheduling and route changes. The ORC have made major scheduling and route changes and a number of these are still yet to be embedded. It's not our business to tell them how to do it. It's not our business to advocate on behalf of the community because the ORC have their own elected representatives. And if the community doesn't like what these representatives do, it's up to the community to change those representatives. To pretend that we have a role in telling the ORC or dictating to the ORC how they're going to run their buses, I think is an extreme arrogance. And I simply cannot believe that we are going to vote to tell them what to do. Imagine how we would feel. Just to give you an idea, imagine how we would feel as a city council if the ORC tried to encourage or dictate to us how we run our parking buildings. How would we feel if the ORC started making submissions telling us how to run what we are elected to do? I think we would laugh them off. And I think that if we send this particular notice of motion through, they will laugh us off.
Thank you, councillor O'Malley.
Thank you. I was actually going to originally abstain from this vote, not because I didn't support it, but because I really believe that it's going to have almost no effect. And the reason I'm going to vote for it now is that I feel that there is a motion, there is a movement inside the council to actually make sure that we have an effect here. And I believe this is the first overture to the ORC of will you actually listen to us? Because while councillor Vandevos might have said he keeps referring to the buses as their buses, they're our buses. They are inside our territorial authority and we are the road-controlling authority. This is our city. And what's weird here is that a decision that was made in Wellington somewhere about twenty-five years ago and then reenforced seventeen or eighteen years ago has simply said that regional authorities must run the buses and territorial authorities can't. And they were more likely for cities like Auckland, which then ironically turned around and got itself a unitary authority, so now it doesn't even have any impact or relationship anymore. So they're our buses, this is our territory. If they can run them fine, then that'll be great, there'll be no issues here. But I suspect, based on our meetings we've already had over this, that the answer's going to come back that no, there's not going to be any modifications to this bus line. It's going to be done as it is because they've got a grand version and they want to pursue it. Out on the Waikato coast, we've been waiting fourteen months for two bus stops, and that timeframe has again come through the ORC's side of it. The DCC has actually met its timeframes every time. That wait is all the ORC. So all I'm saying is do your job well, do it fine, and so we don't notice you, and then we won't be complaining about you. To the analogy of parking buildings, if we ran parking buildings in Queenstown or central Atago and we were running them badly, I would very much expect those territorial authorities to say, sharpen up your act. It's not so much that we have, you know, to say that we have no authority here is kind of, I don't think it's appropriate. And also councillor Hawkins has pointed out that we can only, this people of Dunedin can only influence so much of that council, the rest of that council is outside a territorial authority. So we have to say that we want a better job done, give them the opportunity to do it. If they don't do it, then I think we'll have to keep moving along until we get to the point where we get a resolution that we're happy with. And to me, this is the opening gambit of what I think is actually going to be a series of interactions between us and the ORC. Thank you.
councillor Stedman.
Thank you, worship. For me, this is about an organisation running a service that is not listening to its ratepayers. Those ratepayers have come to us and asked for our help to actually be listened. For me, look, we're going into an era of trying to get people onto our bus service so we get the cars off the road to stop carbon emissions and things like that. This smacks totally in the face of that by allowing thirty or forty more cars on this road every morning and every afternoon. For me, this is about safety. I concur with councillor Gary. We're looking at a morning time and an afternoon time... We're looking at a morning time and an afternoon time for the sake of a death of a child. We've put in all these cycleways around here because we've had some trucks that have hit some cyclists. Spent a lot of money there, but we're talking about two times in a day to save the death of a child. I cannot understand why they have put their head in the sand and will not listen to the actual public. Thank you.
Councillor Laffisa.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to quote in English a proverb that's among that talks about, "The pathway to leadership is service." And so I see myself as a councillor but also as a former community development worker who's term finished in 2014. And one of my last acts as that community development worker in Brockville was to support residents to make submissions on the Itagah Regional Council's transport plan. And it's only through marshalling those resources and being able to organise residents that we made a significant number of submissions which actually affected some change for Brockville residents in terms of their bus route. So I don't consider it to be arrogance for us as elected representatives to be sending a motion through to the Itagah Regional Council. It's just, again, listening to the people as councillor Steadman said, and trying to actually encourage the Itagah Regional Council to be less rigid and less intransigent about their services because it is about the people. The people who have asked us to make representation because their current efforts haven't worked. And I just quote councillor Decker, I think, of the Itagah Regional Council, who said at the time that Brockville residents made their feelings and quite emotionally at some times, the people have spoken and we as the Itagah Regional Council need to listen. And I hope that'll be the same for the Peninsula family.
The speakers. Okay, I will be supporting this motion. I firstly, though, applaud the progress that ORC has made up to date in rearranging its routes and its timetables and its patronage. And that hasn't been easy and they've done a really good job. But as well as agreeing with some of the, all of the points that have been made around the table with regard to our community's interest, I'd point out that the arrangements for bus services on the peninsula as they stand run counter to Dunedin City Council interests and aims as well. And they do so in two ways and probably in more ways, but the two that come to mind. The first one is, and it's been mentioned already, there's going to be a considerable amount of shared path work going on on Porta Bala Road in the next wee while. I can, I live on Porta Bala Road. I already notice the increase in truck-trailer units bringing rock down. It is a marked increase. Has to be done. That's the nature of the job. But adding 30 or 40 more cars each day on top of that is just going to compound it and make it so much more dangerous for everybody, not just the kids, everybody. The second reason is that our integrated transportation strategy aims to give people options other than their cars. And the configuration of the bus service on the peninsula at the moment doesn't encourage that either. So it runs counter to our aims and interests in our transportation strategy in those two ways. So I see this not as dictating to the ORC, it's merely going to them and saying, it's, we believe that it's in our community's interest and in Dunedin City Council's interest for you to reconsider the position you've taken with the routes and scheduling that you have. Please. That's all. Okay. Councillor Hawkins, your right reply, you don't, okay. I'm going to put it in that case. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded please.
Division?
Councillor Elder? Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor Hall? Councillor Hawkins?
Aye.
Councillor Laffiso? Councillor Lord?
Aye.
Councillor Newell?
Aye.
O'Malley?
Aye.
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 Wilson?
Aye.
Aye.
Eleven three.
Carried. Eleven three. Okay. Move on to the item 24. The notice of motion proposed remit for LGNZ 2018 Annual General Meeting. And it's on the order paper. I will open it up again for questions for clarification of the proposer of the motion. So proposer of the motion is councillor Wilson, seconded by councillor Laffiso. Are there any questions of those, of the mover, proposer to clarify? Okay. Or councillor Vanadis?
Yeah, I very much approve of this. And I'm wondering, though, on 3A, where it says sets clear requirements for non-biodegradable plastic disposables and packaging, if the mover and seconder were of a mind to actually encourage the use of biodegradable plastic. Setting requirements for non-biodegradable plastics, one thing. It's a bit of stick, but I think that the, if there was only slight carrot involved in 3A, if the mover and seconder were amenable, that it would be even stronger.
Well, you're happy for the mover to address that when she speaks?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Councillor Wilson, I invite you to speak to the proposal.
Thank you, your worship, and councillor Laffiso for seconding this. This actually came out of a councillor meeting where I think I've tried to translate suggestions from councillor Vanadis and many others around the room at the time. And so it's also consistent, I understand, with the ministry papers to the new minister for the environment when he came in. I think it's he. And we're like, just, I think it's a situation that's also consistent with the waste minimisation intentions of the council. And it's really encouraging the government to set this as a higher priority. It wasn't one that they gave any indication in the first 100 days of action that they planned. But I think it's one that we, it's got huge long-term consequences if this action isn't taken and we need to get a culture change happening. It started with the recycling, of which we've got a very high and effective number of our citizens participating in, but it needs to go further. We're going to have huge problems with things like batteries and TVs and the like and polystyrene if we do not get some traction with this nationwide. I don't want to refocus, and I understand exactly where councillor Vanadis is coming from, but I'm not wanting to say what the solution that consumers will choose, whether it be biodegradable plastics or what. I don't think that that's our remit at the moment to do that. I just want to focus on the waste issues and what comes out will be something that will be different. So that's why I'm not going to include that. I understand why you're coming for it. I think we're dealing with the waste streams here. And so that's where this has come from. And I'm presuming that it's something that the government will enjoy having some support for. And that's why I'm asking that it go to local government in New Zealand. I'm not sure that if your worship's had the opportunity to deal with it at the local government level, and I'm happy to hear from you if you have, but that's the intent. And I'm hoping and quite excited by the chance that this will be accepted by local government in New Zealand and we'd no problems getting the five councils on board with it.
Well, can I just say that in that regard, I am conflicted with regard to LGNZ because I'm on the committee that vets the proposed remits as they come through. And I may accuse myself at that point anyway, but I would prefer not to be getting involved in it here. So you've now moved, I take it, and it's seconded councillor Laffiso? Okay. Next speaker is councillor Vanadis.
I applaud this because it basically sends the right message to the very place where it can be effectively dealt with, and that is central government. We can do whatever we like down here with our waste streams, but if we don't have central government promoting product stewardship over the whole country and promoting biodegradable plastic, then we are in for big trouble. LGNZ, I think, has the ability to present this on behalf of a whole range of councils. And if they do this effectively, my hope is that central government, especially this new government, will actually make decisive and rapid steps towards product stewardship and biodegradable plastic. Because if we have that from central government, then a great deal of our current problems with waste management, landfill and everything else essentially disappear. This is a central government issue. And what this motion does is sends, hopefully, a very clear message to central government on both of these points. So I hope you'll vote for it. Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Just briefly, and I thank councillor Vanadis for his support for this resolution, telling government what to do. And I also thank councillor Wilson for sending us up to the conference with a remit to speak to that has absolutely nothing to do with cats. I'm not that fond of repeating that. But I think this is really timely, given that we're reviewing our own waste management and minimisation plan. The Waste Minimisation Act has very clear powers delegated to the minister around product stewardship by way of declaring priority products, just that they haven't been, those opportunities haven't been taken up by previous ministers for the environment who chose a path of waiting for voluntary mechanisms from the relevant sectors and industries to be developed and roll out. And perhaps not unsurprisingly, that isn't what happened. So what I do hope, that this conversation that happens, and this is not specifically a Dunedin issue, local government around the country has been calling up for greater action on product stewardship and waste management and using the tools that government have. So what I do hope is an outcome of the conversation between LGNZ and the minister and the Ministry for the Environment is some very clear mandatory product stewardship outcomes for, as the mover has pointed out, particularly for our most dangerous materials, whether they're tyres or paint thinners or batteries or e-waste or whatever. And I welcome that kind of hierarchy of risk that's set out here rather than picking the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, and dealing with single-use plastic bags and, you know, bottled deposit buyback schemes which are noble and laudable but don't necessarily deal with the most urgent environmental waste disposal issues that we face. So this is, I don't want to overstate the power or influence that a remit on the floor of the Local Government New Zealand Conference has, but I think if nothing else, this is a useful opening gambit in that conversation between local and central government and how we address this stuff, hopefully in time to influence our own decisions around our waste management and minimisation plan in the early part of next year. Thanks.
Mr O'Malley.
I really support this. And I think I just want to touch on the product stewardship as it comes to councils having to deal with waste. We talk about how councils are taking on more and more burden and not being able to, and taking on more economic burden and not being able to get relief from that. In some countries, product stewardship completely pays for landfills. Because if you think about it, everything that we take to the landfill, we've bought somewhere. So if its disposal costs are in fact linked to the purchase, then in fact the whole cost of waste management can in fact be dealt with at the point of purchase. And it also makes people make decisions about what they will and will not buy. So it's not only an environmental thing we're looking for here. If we're talking about stretched budgets of small councils, this is something that's very important for LGNZ. Thank you.
Fine. The speakers. With that being the case, I will invite councillor Wilson to exercise a right of reply. None? Okay, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Thank you. And that's the end of the public part of the agenda. I'll move from the chair that the council move into confidential for the reasons on the order paper. Seconded councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried.